Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
I have, with no addition or amendments, I would like to make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support it. Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March the first.
I made a motion that the minutes be approved.
Yep. Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the meeting of March the first. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is the financial report.
We began the month with three hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. We took in receipts of a hundred and fifteen thousand, thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. We made dispersments in the amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to accept the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, another correspondent, item A. Homeland Security has their yearly emergency services breakfast begin coming up in May. They're all cordially invited, and it's at the new convention center this year. So, if you'd like going, which you have to do to make your R S V Ps.
The West Texas event, huh?
That's it.
Some of the darkest skies in the nation there.
What day is that?
Twentieth of May.
Yeah. If you want to go see the starters, that's Davis County, Texas. Best place on North Forty-Eight.
Okay. Moving on, we have an old business, we're down to new business. Item A. Resolution, two thousand sixteen oh four. It's on the table in front of you. I put all the information in your packet. But, the planner did not have this in my hands the day your packet went out. So, you're looking at it, and it's basically to adopt an ordinance to rezone a parcel on Marine City Highway, approximately twenty acres. And that's what's on the agenda.
Back in February, Mr. and Mrs. Melles came before us, requesting, they owned a property, but only half of it's industrial, the other half of their culture, and they're requesting zoning. We had several neighbors here expressing concerns, you know, about as if towards like industrial development, how that would affect their properties. Would it affect their property values and such?
And you answered all the questions.
Yeah, I think we did. Now, sir, you were...
We were here, but you answered the questions to the way that you wanted them answered.
What do you mean?
It was like we really weren't heard.
Okay, what were your concerns?
Well, can you guarantee my property values aren't gonna go down?
Why would it?
Because there could be a stamping plant at the back of my property.
I don't think we're allowed stinking plants, do we?
Well, it's on light industrial.
Light.
But, your property is on another road. This butts against the vacuum.
Yeah, but you're basically taking part of my property and making it not usable for whatever it used for in the past.
Why is that?
Because if I was hunting back there, you really can't hunt when there's an industrial building.
What if the guy built a house there? He could build a house and want it zoned now. Are you gonna hunt next to his house?
You can't do that.
You know, that's, that's not great logic. Now, theoretically, you could get industrial development, that could be harmful. But you're right next to industrial on Church.
Yeah, but we're not that close to, I'm not butting up to it.
Well, but your property is what, quarter mile deep?
What I'm trying to say is, when I purchased it, that was zoned agricultural. So, I knew I was going in as it was zoned agricultural.
But progress does come.
Yeah, but why do I have to pay the cost of that?
Well, you're just one that happened to. It's not like we picked you out.
I understand that, but, okay, why, if it was on the master plan, why wasn't this rezoned thirty years ago?
Thirty years ago, there was no use for it.
But it was on, according to everybody here, it was on the master plan.
It is.
It is, so, if it's on the master plan, then it's, if somebody wants to do it, they can do it.
Not always, not necessarily everything immediately, because the township develops, and the master plan is supposed to at least help plan that development, so it's not just random and sporadic. And that's a logical place for industrial.
Yeah, sir, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Scott Forster.
Okay, so, Mr. Forster, also though, in agriculture, you could have a very, you could have a very like large-scale agricultural operation, like a big chicken farm, or a hog hotel go in there. Could even be worse than a light industrial.
Now, to address that, though, like, I want to go build a pole barn, and you guys denied me, so how would they put a hog farm in if you won't let them build a building?
You don't, you have vacant land, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, you can't build, now, if you were, if you're an A, you could build a pole barn for A, but you can't build it for accessory to residential if you don't have a house.
Storage use.
Isn't mine considered aged right now?
I believe, I'd have to look at the map, but if you're zoned A, if you're gonna start a farming operation, yeah, you could build a building for A.
And then I could build a house afterwards?
Yeah.
Well, then why was I denied?
Because you weren't, are you a farmer? You have to be over a certain amount.
Well, what they're gonna do is, they're gonna make a signed affidavit, the building is strictly used for agricultural, and you're gonna attach that to your deed.
Because when I came and approached, nobody explained that to me.
I wasn't here.
No, you weren't here. I was basically dismissed by the ladies in the room.
So, but, yeah, you could, but we'll make it, put an affidavit and fix it to your deed, stating that this building is only to be used for agricultural purposes. So, down the road, some may even wanna sell it after your house is here, and the guy wants to buy it, and he looks at the deed, and he says, well, I can't use this pole barn for residential accessory use, because it's, now he's gotta go back through, get it all inspected again, to see if it complies with building codes for residential use. So, it's, you know, there's an upside and a downside.
I understand.
Yes, I'm sympathetic with your concerns, because it is an unknown, what's gonna happen to that parcel. But it is, it's a logical change for the parcel, parcel, and those that own it, because that is the direction that whole corridor is taking. And this is the next step on that corridor. I'm hoping that you won't face anything that's adverse.
Well, my worry is that once you do this parcel, then the other large parcel across the street will be zoned industrial as well, and then there'll be plants right across the street from it.
What, how many parcels across the street?
There's probably sixty acres at least.
I don't believe there's any. Well, currently, our master plan goes up here, right here, and zoning stretches that way, too.
So, where is his parcel?
You know, Sir O'Leary Bag.
Show us.
Right here, Sir O'Leary Bag.
Yeah, my parcel is here.
Where is it?
So, about thirty-one inch.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're on the side row, not the back row?
And this is the piece that could be zoned next?
Well, theoretically, the owner of that could request an extension of zoning, and not necessarily be approved. They could request it.
Yeah, but then we can be in the exact same boat, is what I'm saying. You guys can go, well, it's progress, and then we're basically being surrounded by industrial, free sellers. So, that's my concern. I don't wanna see my property value drop.
Have you come in and talked with our assessor?
No, I have not.
Yeah.
I would discuss it with her. She could tell you if the...
I don't, I don't think the property across from your house is on the master plan up there for industrial. So, at this time, there's basically no chance of it being rezoned.
They'd have to go for a rezoning.
Some kind of development, I don't know.
Right, but, once you do this, there's a precedent set.
There's more of an exit.
Well, only if the master plan has changed. Now, you asked before about the zoning, and even though it's been currently zoned the way it is for many years, probably at least thirty-five, the master plan's only had this changed ten years. Because ten years ago, they said, looking ahead twenty-five years, is it realistic to have four parcels, where the front half is industrial, and they're narrow parcels, most of them, and the back half is A? What you're really saying to the guy is, the back end's dead, you can't use it for anything.
Yeah, but when the people bought it, they realized that, at that point. They knew what they were getting to.
But then the master plan changed, and if you owned the property, wouldn't you want it?
But what I'm thinking is...
Yeah, no, I asked you a question. If you owned the property, and it said that you can change it from ag to industrial, to your benefit, would you want it?
I don't know. I don't know what I would have, if I had a plan for it.
But you...
I honestly can't.
Yeah, I mean, but you can't...
I don't blame them for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, what they're asking is reasonable.
I understand that, and I don't blame them one bit, but I don't wanna see my property value, you know?
We don't wanna see your property values drop either.
And I don't wanna be surrounded by stamping plants. Back, you know, kilos going backwards all day long, and you move out to the country to get some peace.
That's across the street from you now.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand your concern. It's, you know, it's, like, who, like what Bill said, who knows what the future's gonna bring? And maybe it'll never develop, could be just a field there. Whoever gets it develops it up front.
Well, I don't think that's really gonna happen. It sounds like there's somebody that's interested in it, and they want, if it's zoned industrial, that they be interested in it.
Well, one thing we don't, there's no, well, they could get water from our township.
No sewers available, though.
Yeah, there's no sewer, so nothing big.
As you go down twenty-six, you see a number of parcels for sale. Nobody's snapping those up. There's a reason for that. No water, no sewer, and it costs a ton of money to develop the site from scratch. So, they'd rather buy something that's already in existence, or at least has utilities, to make it easier to develop. I don't believe there's a negative aspect to your property values. I understand the hunting, but you can't worry about what the neighbor has as far as your hunting capability. You're not supposed to be shooting on a neighbor's property anyway.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if there's a plant there, and I'm shooting at my own property, there's nothing gonna be there.
Well, it's been zoned for probably forty years. How many factories do you see operating in Casco? Factories?
Well, there's the...
We have storage places.
The consumer?
That's not on...
Consumers' meat is all in Iowa.
Right.
Well, they do have, um, Casco.
Well, they got some tanks there, but that's it.
They got stations.
But that's a utility, that's not a fact.
Yeah, they've been there sixty years.
I think Statler's the only major manufacturing operation in Casco.
They moved.
Did they already get out of there?
Yeah, they're across the street.
That's good.
I think the likelihood that, short term, is probably nothing, and long term, I don't know. If something is developed, you know, the only thing we have close to that is the trucking company down the road. You know, it's, their trucks go way back where they park them, and that's about it. The other stuff's all pretty close to the road.
All the other buildings are within the quarter mile limit, except this one would be a half a mile deep instead.
No, as you look down, they're all a half mile, and then they hit a spot, and there's three or four where the front half is zoned different to the back. And on the master plan, it says, those could be rezoned.
Because almost all, except for consumers, it looks like it's a quarter mile according to the plan.
Yeah, but they have a possibility of being rezoned.
No, that's not, that's not accurate. You see where, you see where Bee Thie Road is, right? Can you see it from there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as soon as you come off of Bee Thie Road, none of that's consumers, and that's all half a mile.
That's true.
And then it steps down, well, there's four parcels, I believe, that were half and half zoned. Okay, and we said, looking into the future, that's idiotic, because the guy can't farm it. You can't build a house back there, because they're narrow enough, by the time you develop the front, and you keep a certain width of easement to get to the back, the front's hard to build. So, what are you gonna do? Well, the logical thing is to zone it all in one thing. And that's why we changed the master plan ten years ago. I still think it's a logical step to take.
It's not done lightly. I mean, the Metropolitan Planning Commission looked over all of the, you know, issues in this case, and concur with us that this is a reasonable thing to do, both for that parcel and for the use of the parcel, reasonable use of the parcel. And I understand it. There is a possibility something adverse will happen to you, but right now, there's nothing in the future that we can foresee that would, in a reasonable, in a reasonable angle. And it is in keeping with the way the master plan is moving, and I don't think we could have a basis to really deny this request.
Okay, well, the question was, were our questions answered?
I did ask that, and he answered me. But you got more answers today.
Well, yes, I did. I realize there's nothing that I can do to stop this. You know, I checked legal precedents, and there's nothing I can do unless you guys are colluding against us, so. And I don't know that, you know, I don't think that's the case, so.
No, we're, we're following our ordinance and state law.
But I just hope that you guys will protect us if there is something that's going in there, and keep the noise, you know, because people are already having problems with the experience there.
If, let's say if there's a build, industrial development, where there's a, we have a performance standards of screening, so residential properties aren't adversely affected by any development.
And the site plan has to go through the planning commission if something like that happens, and I think you have a very aware and protective planning commission in the township. And you would have to have an opportunity to do that, too.
Myself, I would worry more if an agribusiness came around showing money to the people to buy up their parcels. You talk about something that really lowered the quality of life in this area, or something like that.
An industrial farming.
I know the other neighbors already have a problem, though, with people shooting at night under their property from the storage place and the trucking place. And then they all the lights.
Yeah, do we check into that, or did we?
Well, the other residents that I talked to, I said, you know, as far as the shooting goes, oh, you just call the police, you know, and see what they can do for you.
But what about the lights?
No, I have not checked the lights at night, because it was, I know that was a concern at the meeting. I've had some health problems since New Year's, so I'll be honest with you, I have not been over there. I will check it out, and if it looks bad, I will ask the owner of the business if he can shave it, not do off his property. All he can do is tell me to get out. I don't think this will have a negative impact on your property values.
I certainly hope not. Like I said, I already, I checked the legal precedents, and there's nothing we can do.
Well, but even with the current zoning, if things, in the worst-case scenario, somebody could put a compost site in there, and you'd be jumping off the wall, because they're stinking, you know?
Well, we already have one that's stinking.
Well, you could have one right behind your house, so, because you can do that in A.
Yeah, that's basically right going, it is basically right behind you. It smells bad enough.
So, you know, if you always think of the worst case, theoretically, that could be, I don't see it happening. Even if you go down twenty-six right now, I don't see many businesses there, other than the lights, maybe, that are really negative to the area around them. So, I don't know, I think it's, I think it's a good move. Oh! So, I think it has more positives than negatives.
Yeah, I know you're worried, and you're kinda, I think you're sorting through, you're feeling just being here, and that's, that's, that's good, and, but, but, yeah. No, we, I mean, we don't wanna see your property values drop either, you know?
I know, I'm surprised the other neighbors aren't here either, because they were not happy, and they left last night, too.
Sure, I understand.
Some people don't follow her, but you did.
Okay, we're in the motion, yep.
Oh, I make a motion to approve ordinance thirty ninety-two, rezone a parcel seventy-four twelve zero three two three zero zero two zero zero zero.
You're adopting the resolution, right?
We're approving the resolution and adopting the ordinance thirty dash ninety-two.
Got it.
I'll support it. Okay, moved and supported to approve resolution sixteen, two thousand sixteen oh four, and adopt Casco Township ordinance thirty dash ninety-two. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me. Joe?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item B. Approve employment of Mr. Dennis LaForest for lawn and maintenance. We had a longtime friend that did this for many years that passed away. Mr. LaForest is a resident of the township, and he's offered to do it, and see how it works out. He will be an employee of the township, and his starting pay, according to our employee manual, will be eleven dollars an hour, which is not big bucks in these days.
I make a motion to approve employment for Mr. LaForest as a lawn and maintenance employee of the township.
I'll support it.
Moved and supported to approve employment of Mr. Dennis LaForest. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen, yes.
Okay, moving on. Item C, Richmond Fire Contract for the years two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. As you are aware, our contract expired a year ago, almost, and it took this long to get, basically to get the city to get everybody together. So, they made it a four-year contract, since the first year's basically long. Most of the terms are the same. It's predicated on a formula, on what percentage of runs each community has. Our cost is approximately forty-six thousand dollars a year, but that could change year to year depending on the number of runs. Of that forty-six, ten thousand is for the equipment fund, and I gave you all the information they gave me. That's forty thousand a year for the four communities. Well, what equipment costs, two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. So, they ask, and everybody agreed with the meeting we had, that in the third year of this contract, we'd up to ten to eleven. And in the fourth year, we would go to twelve, and that seemed reasonable.
No, are they, they're not gonna, are they gonna be replacing any of their own?
Well, they, the pump on their tanker went out last year, cost forty thousand dollars.
Really?
So, they're in the, right now, they're looking for, they're trying to get a grant for their medical run unit. And to get the best of the best is like two hundred thousand, they try.
Medical run unit, how is that different than EMS?
They don't transport, and they have the capabilities, they have the jaws of life, and it's a bunch of stuff.
Okay, it's a rescue truck, basically.
Yeah, and even the jaws of life, now they're making the cars with this new material, instead of steel in the doors. It's a fiber thing, I forget the name of it, and the jaws of life will cut it, so now they gotta upgrade, try and get the jaws of life upgraded to cut it. But we've only got, what was it, our current, we only have currently like forty thousand in the equipment fund. So, they're gonna try, you know, and that's a small amount.
Yeah, a couple of...
So, hopefully they can get that grant. Other than that, the other language, we just fine-tuned a couple of items. So, I think it's a pretty reasonable contract. They do a good job. They serve our community very well.
Yeah, they do.
And I recommend we approve the four-year contract.
Make a motion to approve the four-year contract with Richmond Fire Department for Casco Township.
Support it. Moved and supported to approve the four-year contract with Richmond, City of Richmond, and Township of Casco. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is budget adjustments, and by the end of the fiscal year. We felt we had this cleaned up last month, but a few of the line items, when we anticipated X amount of dollars on the bill, we got X plus a few more. So, we have, do you want to go over this?
Yes, I will. One of them would be the planner, one oh one, one oh one eight seventeen. The budget amount would be three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, which would bring our amended budget up to fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. The next budget amendment was under maintenance, one oh one, one oh one nine thirty, for six ninety-seven seventeen. That would bring our amended budget up to ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Heating inspector, one oh one, three seven one nine sixty, was two hundred dollars, which brings us our amended budget up to twenty thousand, two hundred dollars. Full dues for our building inspectors is sixty dollars, and it would bring the amended budget up to six oh five. The total of our amended budgets was one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and nine cents, taken from our attorney dues, which would leave an end balance in attorney fees of nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments for April twenty sixteen.
Support it.
Moved and supported to approve the budget amendments for April twenty sixteen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen, yes.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is road commission work orders for this year. And I kinda made a little synopsis on the first page, because in previous years, we usually read the material and what you're getting, including it out. So, that would make it easier to page it through all of it. I go over it real quick. Limestone, we're looking at eight thousand, three hundred tons for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Chloride, a hundred and ninety thousand gallons for thirty-eight thousand. Shoulder patching, two thousand, ditch mowing, five thousand. And the county has a matching limestone program of eighty-twenty. They pay eight percent, we take twenty percent. So, that would be four thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Do you have a total? Nope.
No.
Okay.
People wanna know, we put limestone on the road, where it goes to, it goes off in dust.
That's for sure.
Yeah, so that's where, we put stone on the road every other year that it doesn't get pounded down, it just flies away in dust.
No, we put it every year.
It packs down.
We put limestone on every year.
Yeah, the body goes away in dust.
I agree, but not every year. All right.
The mowing and the patching are the same as last year. Limestone per ton is the same as last year. Chloride went up ten percent, and that's about it. We may have some more coming up in a month or two on ditching, but we don't have anything ready. but we don't have anything ready to bring to the board right at this time. So.
Make a motion for these, I'll make a motion of the road commission work orders for 2016 being approved.
Now, let's support that.
Don't you want that read off?
We usually put them in the minutes, because then it's in the book. So someday when they go back and look, they can see what we spent and how much it cost. Okay.
Do you want me to read these off?
Please.
Limestone, limestone for all north and south roads, 8,362 tons, costing $142,341.68. Chloride for the roads, 190,000 gallons at $38,760. Shoulder patching for $2,000. Ditch mowing for $5,000. Limestone for three miles of east and west roads, under the 80/20 program, $1,508 tons, at a cost of $4,973.38.
And you support that, right?
I do.
Right, I do.
Okay, moved in support to approve the work orders as outlined. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Uh, me. Joe.
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Did you vote to approve?
I said yes.
Oh, I agree.
Me, yes.
Okay. Yeah.
We don't put limestone on her road.
No, you don't.
We stopped it.
No, yours is a mayor road.
Yeah.
Township is a mayor road.
Yeah.
Okay.
I suppose yes at all. There you go, see, I'm supportive.
Moving on, item F, request for a fire run waiver. We have a lady that's a resident of our township that had an electrical problem, and they called out the fire department, and we sent her a bill for $250. And she came in, she wrote a very nice letter stating that she's on a very low fixed income, and she's requesting that the township waives the fire run in her case due to financial hardship. And both the clerk and myself agree that that should be done.
Yeah, I make.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to waive the fire run.
Support.
Very nice letter.
She was nice.
She praised for the, she was responsible, I liked that.
Very nice.
Who would have thought that?
Right, that's very nice, right.
Okay.
We have to live on what she's got to live on.
Yeah. Brenda, did you want her? Are we in the motion?
No.
Not in the motion?
No.
No, you could just waive, maybe you can reference the.
Run.
The incident run number.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
15-028. Yeah, I don't want to.
So you want that part of your motion? Who made the motion?
Uh, Joe.
You want the incident numbers for your motion? Do you support it?
I do.
Okay, moved in support to waive the fire run for incident 15-028. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Moving on, time to pay the bills.
Any questions, any questions, Angela?
None, I make a motion to approve the.
Support. Moved in support to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Who's starting?
Huh?
Who's starting?
Colleen, Colleen. Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Me.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, citizen comments. Do you want to address the board, or any questions for us, no doubt, if you do so? We would request you give us your name for the record, but we won't shoot you if you don't.
Sure, I got a question for you guys.
And who are you?
My name, my, I'll stand up. My name's Todd Siska, and I live in Columbus Township. And I see you have a house that sits between Frank's Transmission and the new eyeglass place on county line there. And I was wondering, I heard they were gonna tear down that house, and I was wondering what it would take to, you know, have someone move into that house, or make it something.
It's my understanding, the bank has it, it's in foreclosure, and they're in the process of selling it. That's all I know. I've had two companies calling me that want to buy it, and, because it's owned commercial.
Right.
And put a business up. I have nothing to do with that, it's that the bank owns it, I don't own it. If it hasn't been vacant too long, then it's condemned. You know, theoretically, you could probably move into it. I don't know, because I haven't been in it. But we have no, the township has no say over what happens until the bank does something with it.
All right, so I'm wondering, do you have a contact number for me or anything?
We don't usually, on the tax roll, it will list the bank, but it, it will say Bank of America, Bank of Mellon, whatever. And there's, there's really, usually it's a California contact number, but generally, they don't give us any contact information. There's no real estate person involved, and there's no, there's no immediate contact number for anyone at the bank itself. So until it's recorded up at the county that there's been a sale, we're as much in the dark as anybody else is on things like that.
So I got no way, can't get anybody on it.
Well, we can check, call my office in the morning and we can check.
Okay, I'll call you off.
You know?
Well, because when the companies called me, they were steered over here from Jerry Sebastian, the Realtor.
Okay.
Okay, so that would probably be my recommendation, get ahold of them. So I don't know if he's involved with trying to sell it to the bank or what. So I don't know if you're familiar with him at all.
No.
He's a local, he lives on St. Clair Highway.
Well, yeah, actually.
We have a phone number for him at the office.
Huh?
We can give him the phone number.
Well, if you just look on the real estate or Google him, I'm sure you would get him. I would go there first.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have one thing. There's no business to discuss at the planning commission for April, so there will not be an April planning commission.
In the update I put in there about the Melton drain, I sense learned that we will not be assessed anything for the Melton drain this year. And there's only about a 20% chance that the work will actually stem issue.
How long is that assessment going on over?
Well, we have the option of paying over 10 years, which will cost us $79,000 interest. If you go that way, it'd be 10 years at 26 a year. That's the numbers come out that they project.
So start seeing our bottle.
Well, start. Get ready.
Get ready.
Get ready. Uh, that's about it. You know, we do have, the county has $10,000 available for ditching. And last fall, we did apply for matching money, 50/50 matching, $150,000 for ditching. So theoretically, we could do $60,000 worth of ditching for $25,000. Now, that was before I found out about the Melton drain, so. But it's still a pretty good deal. So I hate to have the former of the road commission do a really big study on a ditch, unless there's some interest that we might want to do it. I think I'm gonna have to look at one. One ditch that would be Melton Road from Puttingup to St. Clair Highway. It's a very heavily traveled road. The east side of the road. And it's not a giant ditch, but there's quite a few people there, and.
Quite a few puddles.
Well, the water stays on because of the berm some places. And there's enough traffic that it just keeps. The work order for the 80/20 limestone is going to be Mayor Palms, and that's for Puttingup, Lindsay, and Heston. I would have rather put one mile over this way, but he said those are the three miles that he has to scrape the most. So I gotta go with the guy that does the scraping.
Right.
So that's about it.
Make a motion, that will be your turn.
One second.
Oh, sorry.
Just a small thing. We went to the workshop, the county workshop recently, and they had a presentation about Michigan roads, which was, there was some striking information about, very discouraging information.
Yes.
There's about, I don't know, nine to 10 billion dollars available for roads. But it's really the cost of doing what really needs to be done, even just starting to get there, is about 90, 80 to 90 billion. So the shortfall is, is just horrendous to get Michigan roads anywhere near where they should be. And our roads are now at the, pretty close to the bottom of the barrel in terms of, and had been throughout time in terms of funding and support. And, and what was so striking in this whole presentation is that the, he was asked whether, what are the road limits on, weight limits on Michigan roads. They're about twice as much as any other average, is the average of all the other states.
Wow.
Twice as much. So, and there is no will apparently in the legislature whatsoever, nor has there been, even though they continue to introduce legislation to reduce the weight limits on Michigan roads. There's some vested interests in logging and other, other industries that really have an interest in keeping the weight limits as high as possible. So I think that's something to keep in mind when you talk to your representatives and so on.
Well, a couple, a couple points on that.
Sure.
Most states are 80,000 pounds gross vehicle.
We're 170, I think.
166.
Yeah.
But one way to keep in perspective is the weight per axle is no different from those states and our states. So you have more weight, you have more axles. What, and it's debatable how much, because if you had half the weight, you'd have twice the trucks. So, you know, there's two sides.
When that was, that, that point was made, and the fellow from the transportation department just sort of smiled. It's not really, there is a problem with the amount of weight that travels our roads. There's no, the, the, the transportation folks who try, trying to do this with such limited resources really feel that it would be to the advantage of the state big time if those weight limits were changed.
I go down that to Ohio, I miss this a lot. Their roads exceed our roads massively. The one thing that Michigan roads have over Ohio is that our roads will have well-built shelters where Ohio doesn't. I mean, it's grass ditch right there.
Yeah, you're going.
But I travel down M-59 every day out to Auburn Hills between Hayes and M-53. Now, this M-59, one of the main state trunk lines, it's a disgrace.
Oh, unbelievable.
A road that's only about 20 years old, it's a disgrace. So what, what percentage?
You have to plan on a traffic jam on M-59 if you're going in the middle of the day over to Ballmott, Troy, because you're always having to do something to get the road fixed. I mean, it's terrible.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it just, it's just this, how could they attract business if they don't invest in the infrastructure? It's all solely in that business.
And that's just the visible infrastructure, the other issues are under the ground and as bad or worse. I've always had, I always had hope, but.
How many, what percentage of the semis on the road do you think are over the 80,000 pound carry?
I don't know.
It's somewhere around 13%. But our roads are a terrible build, they're near.
Sorry, I have another meeting.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have anything? We are to adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any support there?
Oh, yeah, support.
Moved in support to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
I stand in charge.